Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is Board of Selectmen meeting for July 28, 2022. It is 6:01 PM now. And can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So the first thing on the agenda would be the Board of Health with Taylor Millspec and CM RK. Is that what?
Yep.
Okay.
How are you?
How you doing? So what's up?
Do I stand over there or do I stand here?
You can come up here.
Okay.
What do we have?
I've got some packets. I didn't even get them. At the time, I only brought two.
That's right.
So it might be due yet. I did give them.
Okay.
So these are the same package?
They might be. I haven't looked at them.
Yeah, I think everything is the same. So CM RK, we collect clothing, textiles, and small household items two main ways. First being through our strategically placed clothing donations bins. And we'll pay your town seven cents for every pound of clothing and textiles collected in those bins. What that is great for is that new legislation that's coming down in November that says no textiles can go in the waste stream starting November. And then we also offer free curbside pickup for our four-year residents where they can call, go online, and schedule their free home pickups.
Okay. And have you looked into this?
I have not seen any information from the Board of Health that has been on this.
Okay.
So I was kind of waiting for the go-ahead from you guys after last time. And I wanted to bring Taylor up so that way you could meet her. And if you had any questions after the documents I gave you last time, she would be here with me to kind of answer that. My main goal here isn't to drive for the seven cents. It's the fact that the regulation is coming down. And I want to make sure that everybody in town has access to get rid of their textiles, whether they're homebound, whether they're not. I mean, that's kind of our drive coming from the health department.
Okay.
Our mental background, that's the biggest thing. We want people to be able to get rid of these things. No extra charge, no hassle, just kind of there.
Now, is the pound getting assessed? Any fees at all for this?
No, not at all. It's totally free. We've been around for 35 years. Last year, we collected 25 million pounds of clothing. We've signed on over 40 cities and towns across Massachusetts. We've already been operating in your town. It's just confirming and solidifying a partnership so that you get the benefit.
Do you have any questions? So if people just add their clothes to the bins?
Yep, so...
And then how does the home pickup? You just call and schedule?
They can call, text, or go online to schedule their free home pickup. It's when we are in this area that they're scheduled, typically about once a month. And they can donate not just the textiles, but also the small household items. So bicycles, musical instruments, pots, pans, things of that nature. They're giving them new life. We don't pay for that items, but it counts towards your overall diversion rate. And it's keeping it out of the waste stream.
Where are you guys sitting down?
So we already have one at the transfer station. And then I don't remember off the top of my head. Do you remember how many I said that we've been to last year? It was like 400 households or something like that that we've visited.
Yeah. Their CM RK is not at the transfer station labeled there, but they're St. Vincent de Paul.
Because it says Salvation Army, I think.
Oh, does it? Maybe I have it backwards in my head. But I thought we had a St. Vincent de Paul at the transfer station. If it's Salvation Army, then I'm totally wrong. And they're not there. For some reason, I was thinking of St. Vincent de Paul. But they are also that, so if...
Yeah, so we do St. Vincent de Paul, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
So you're gonna be at the dump?
Yep, and then we can also place them strategically. So like the police stations, we love the police stations. People aren't gonna dump there. Fire departments, Council of Bejings, places of that. We...
I don't think you're getting into our police stations, so...
Hey, be assured. You guys are in a good mood today. But we service our bins regularly. We respond within one business day of any instance of dumping. And we send you that report as well.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah.
We talked about putting something over there.
Yeah, I would say if we're gonna do one, we'd do one here. Back here, off in the corner, so at least we can monitor it. And it's not an eyesore throughout the town.
Correct. And it helps you be in that compliance with Mass D U P, so...
So what did you need? A motion to go into alliance with them?
There is a contract in the folder that I gave you guys. So ultimately, I think the Select Board might have to be the one to sign that.
Did you review that contract?
No, I haven't seen it so much.
Okay. So we're gonna hold off on signing that contract and doing this motion?
Okay.
Because we want to make sure we review the contract before we enter into it.
Okay.
Memorandum of understanding?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll review that and then we'll get back to you. We'll probably do a vote on it next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
So it will be nice, Brianna, maybe we can coordinate with Brianna and have the locations where they're gonna be and everything so we can create a, like, an announcement?
Right, yeah.
And put it out there so people know it's coming from us and it's here, here, and there.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, they, you guys also have a website that we can link to ours so people can go on and...
Yes, so we have a website. And then part of our partnership as well is you receive monthly marketing materials that you can use in your websites, your newsletters. I also will help you create a press release to help get that word out there. Yeah, so that is one that is going live. But if you go to Big Brothers, Big Sisters Foundation...
Because I just scanned this.
That is our one that's coming up. That's our preview. But this is just an example of our marketing materials that you'll be able to see and the items that we collect. But if you go to the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Foundation, you'll be able to schedule your free home pickup.
Okay, we'll get details later, okay? So we can do it nice for all the residents.
Yes, and in your packet, you'll see two examples of press releases that stands field and winter off.
Good?
Yep.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Have a great day.
Thanks, guys.
For coming and presenting to us. Okay. So next thing on our agenda is probably something that all the town has been looking at right now. It's kind of all over social media. Everybody's talking about it. And it's the retirement of K-9 Murray. He's been a part of our community for a long time.
Seven years now? Exactly. Seven years?
Yes.
So Officer LaFleur has started this program. And we have benefited greatly for everything they've done and a part of the community that he's been as far as involved in outreach programs, working with the kids, going to the schools, and many other things. You know, I believe him and Officer Murray and Officer LaFleur have actually been decorated through the state one time. Is that correct?
I was. I was gonna ask him to Murray, because I guess he was cool.
Okay. So...
I was, yeah.
Because of your work. And, you know, I think everybody that lives in town knows who Officer LaFleur is, and they all know who Murray is. You see Murray everywhere. I see signs of him everywhere. And I even, every time you go in the post office, you see the little Murray doll. So he's been a big part of our community. And, you know, this is a sad day because, again, we would like to continue. But at some point, every police officer, every K-9 knows when to say it's time to move on.
So Murray's almost invisible. He's developed health problems, he's got arthritis, an aggressive form of Lyme disease. So it's time for him to retire. And like you said, he stole my thunder from everything you said. But I just don't wanna... Joey did start this on his own. He went out, did the research. But I don't want to forget Stacy. Stacy did a lot for this program also.
Yeah.
If it wasn't for those two, this program wouldn't have been that years ago. So I just wanted to thank those two. And I think you have something for Murray?
Yep. And I think we all want to say thank you also, Stacy. You have been a big part of this community. And, you know, thank you for everything you've done for the town and everybody here also. You guys are the power team of the town. You did a great job. And I have to say, I see a dad back there. And I have to say, if I was your dad, I'd be very proud of you because you've done so good.
So I guess before we hand that out, I also wanna say Joey's leaving us. He and his wife decided that they're gonna make the move down south. Joey's been with us since 2005, where he started as a dispatcher. I say Joey because he's always been Joey to me. Or Vlad. He started as a full-time dispatcher. Moved on to a part-time officer. Moved on to a full-time officer. Then he became our first K-9 officer. So with that, we want to say thank you to Officer LaFleur. I'll leave ya.
We've also got to give something to help remember. With Officer Murray here. Just want to give it a clap also.
Awesome.
So... Everybody sees that. There you go. You wanna...
Sure.
Picture?
No, hold on. Derek, get in here.
Yeah, get in here.
Get in here. Come on, Rich.
I swear he's not gonna bite you.
Derek, too, on that side. So here you go, Joe.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
We're gonna wipe our dog over.
No, definitely not. I did try and run on the back, but laughing, laughing doesn't work.
Oh, no, that's very stylish.
If you look in the light like this?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Don't run away yet. What are you gonna do?
Well, I need to pass this off. There you go. Hopefully, the "I love me well" has enough room on it for this. But as on behalf of the union and all our members, we would like to thank you for all your service to the town and present you with this flag. Everybody good? Pass this off.
Secretary. Thank you, Eric.
I just wanna say thank you. You're a wonderful man. And behind a wonderful man, there's always a wonderful woman.
That's true.
And you have a wonderful family. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Joe?
Now I have to say something. Caught me on the spot. Yeah, I don't know. Like the chief said and everybody heard, I've been here since 2005, where I was a dispatcher, part-time officer, I was a firefighter in town. I don't know. I've done a lot of things, so... Yeah, thank you to Warren for all the opportunities and the opportunity to have a K-9. I did start it with my wife, you know, through a grant. And we were able to get Murray all the training and everything free to the town, so that was excellent. And it's been a fun ride. And we're moving on in the next chapter of our life. But, you know, we're not gonna forget about Warren. And certainly, no hard feelings to Warren. We had a good time here, and hopefully, everyone does well. I know there's some new officers coming on, so congratulations, guys, if I don't see ya. And hopefully, you can do a great job and continue in the traditions of making Warren a safer place, hopefully, in a better town. Thank you.
And I think it's important to recognize that how many citizens in the town stepped up when we needed the help so we didn't have to take town money from Murray. So pretty much everything we did was based on donations, especially when he got sick. And that was all the townspeople helping us. So we're forever grateful for that help from the town.
That too. All right, thank you.
Now, don't go too far because we have to do the formal votes now. And actually, we...
Don't go anywhere, Eric.
Don't go anywhere. Murray, a little pie.
All right. So I'll actually do the motion. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the retirement for K-9 Murray and the resignation of Officer LaFleur from the town of Warren Police Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Vettig Bitties, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. It is official, sir. The motion passes unanimously. Murray is officially retired. Okay. So let's sign the releases.
So you just have to make a motion on the release of the caring custody of Murray?
Okay. So we're also gonna do a motion to make a... How are we reading this?
To the release of liability and responsibility.
So make a, I'm gonna make a motion to sign the release agreement to the town's liability and responsibility of K-9 Murray.
Second.
All in favor?
Vettig Bitties, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
So Officer LaFleur will sign the release.
You good?
All set.
Again, you guys are here at a great time because you're seeing a good man, a great police officer, and... And occasional blooper is happening. But, you know, again, Joe, we want to thank you very much for everything you've done and everything you've done for our community. And before you go, I just want to officially sign you in, say thank you.
Okay, if you can get by this one, kid. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Freddie. Thank you.
Gotta give Murray a pat.
Hey, Murray. All right. Emotional. So do you guys want to say anything? Before we...
Well, they already know you're awesome. They don't need to repeat it.
Chief, did you want to end up with anything?
They hate to talk in front of the community more than I do. No, I, like I said, Joey's been here as long as I have. It's gonna be weird not having him. It'll be good in the next chapter.
I'll send you a palm tree picture.
When it's snowing up here?
Sergeant LaFleur, did you want to say anything?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm really proud of him. He's done a good job from this tight agreement department. He's really done it on his own. He has really had a lot of help from me because he needed it. So I was there if he needed it. But most probably, he did this all by himself. He certainly did all his K-9 by himself. Chief Spielkowski handed over to him and said, "Go for it." And he did, and he's been a full-program lawyer. He's been a good model police officer in the town, well-respected by everybody, well-known by everybody. And as a father, I couldn't be prouder of him.
Thank you.
And as his mother, I did owe what his father just said. And he's been, we can't be more proud. He's done a great job.
Stacy did hit on something that we should say is thank you to the town because when his cruiser went down, if they didn't step up and get the donations, no way that we would afford to be able to fix that. Especially the businesses and the town people, we need them.
They definitely, you had the support of the town. That was obvious everywhere you went.
Yeah, for sure, no, very grateful.
Did anybody else want to say anything?
I'm Miss Graham, and I'm really proud. I've known her all my life.
Get a lot of people proud.
I got like third cousins coming in a minute.
All right. You guys want to say anything?
You good?
Congratulations, Officer LaFleur. Made quite an accomplishment. Remember us when we have the four-letter word "snow."
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Joe. Thank you, everybody. You know, it's a sad time, but it's a happy time because you guys are moving on to the next chapter of your life. Better weather. Florida is beautiful. And I'm sure you're gonna have new and great opportunities there. We know what you're capable of here, and we know you're definitely capable of doing that there, too. So you're gonna be awesome. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. I thought you said bye.
Thanks, Ed.
You'll say bye, too.
Say bye-bye.
Well, that cleared the room pretty fast.
Well, the rest of our meeting's pretty boring, you know?
Well, why is she giving out money?
Well, no, we don't have much money to give up.
Oh, my God, she's giving away.
I'm trying to collect.
Okay.
Yes.
So everything's squared away with that. You good? Okay. So again, with a sad moment, we have some happy moments bringing on some new officers. So that's the next part. And we're reviewing the candidates, the two full-time positions that are open. And it's for Paul Sojin and Bradford Merkel. Correct? Did I butcher those in any way?
Close enough.
Close enough. People butcher my name all the time. You can see on there, it's not exactly easy to say. Just remember Eddie Dufrain from Shawshank Redemption. That's when people get it, so...
Do you usually yell at me and say, "No, do not press it"?
What's that?
They used to tell me it's DeFresne.
Who?
When you first voted it. Well, yeah, I don't think so. He says Dufrain.
It's Dufrain, yeah. Silent X. All right. So...
Yep, your art. So first one is Paul. So Paul, we have obviously Officer LaFleur leading. We also have the ninth position, so we created two openings. First, put in front of you is Paul Sojin. Paul currently is one of our part-time officers. Oh, before I even get to that, I wanted to thank Jim. Jim was huge in helping us with our interviews. He interviewed them with Lieutenant and I. It was great to have him there with us. All right, Paul. So Paul's currently one of our part-time officers. He's been fabulous for us. He's taken him upon, came to me and asked me about our medical. He got a CPR certification first day. He's been teaching us. He's also bringing that back to the town. He's teaching all the employees currently. The active shooter here, he's been the one that's helped them, helping me research everything. So he's been huge in that part. On the road, he never had any complaints. Everyone likes him. He does a great job. So I'm looking to see, have the board vote to have Paul move from part-time to one of our openly full-time slots.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any questions about that. Very welcome, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have any questions?
Just my typical, I wave at every officer, is he in town?
Absolutely. He's got a new car, so you gotta look out for the Bronco.
Okay. Can't miss it.
Do you have anything to say, sir?
I've been with the town just over a year now at part-time capacity. It's been fantastic. To the chief's point, I've just kind of really tried to give back as much as I can between the CPR and kind of giving my all when I am here. You know, I look forward to what kind of things I can do. And, you know, I know this is just the tip of the iceberg in terms of part-time. So hopefully, I can really delve in, really make a bigger impact when I'm here in a full-time capacity. So I look forward to the opportunity.
Very good. You guys have any questions? We can do a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Paul Sojin from part-time to full-time police officer in the town of Warren. Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Vettig Bitties, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Paul Sojin is a full-time police officer. All right.
So moving on, this is kind of strange because we're losing one officer to Florida and we're gaining one from Florida.
We're trading.
We're trading. We're trading. This is Bradford Merkel.
Brad.
Brad, like I said, Brad started out in law enforcement in Florida. He actually grew up here in Massachusetts.
In Breachery.
In Breachery. Graduated from Lawton. Then moved down to Florida, where he went to the police academy for the Sheriff of Hope County.
Oh, Harde County.
That's close. Going off memory. Went through the police academy with him. While he was with them, he was on the SWAT team. He's also a master diver, was on the dive team. He comes with, this is a stack of his certs. So he has several courses. So he comes with eight years' experience. So I'm looking for the board to also not only accept him as a full-time, but also move him to a step two due to his experience with all his certs and the experience with law enforcement.
All right. Do you have anything to say, sir?
Yeah, no, I'm very eager to become a part of the Warren family. I've heard great things from the chief and lieutenant and what they're trying to do here. Throughout the interview process, speaking with Jim, it sounds like the department's really starting to build up and trying to really get hold in time inside the community. And I'm looking for the department being back here to build from there. And I mean, it's nice being six minutes away from here. I live in Westbrook Field, so I'm eager to get the ball rolling and get working and get to meet the community and the citizens in.
Do you have any questions?
No. No, sir, I'm good.
I don't have any questions for you?
Well, I have one.
Oh.
Are you sure you don't? This snow doesn't bother you?
Sorry. No, 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 no.
You're not going back to snow either?
I was gonna warn him, like, man, you're wearing all the gear in 100 degrees all the time. It gets hot.
Just taking.
Hence why we have the AC cranking. All right. So you're good?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no questions for you also.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Bradford Merkel as a full-time police officer in the town of Warren. Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Vettig Bitties, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And Brad is a full-time police officer in the town of Warren now.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The next motion.
Congratulations, guys.
Thanks, Mom.
Thank you for watching.
Just give a hand.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Good job.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Oh, you ain't going down yet.
Uh-oh, I got something else?
Yeah, we got another motion.
Uh-oh.
Okay. So congratulations to both of you gentlemen. Um, thank you for taking on the town, and, you know, um, Warren becomes your family. Uh, as you know, from working in the community, uh, it's a close-knit community. Everybody knows everybody, and, um, you know, chief, he's all right. Lieutenant's awesome, okay? So, but the chief's great, too. So you got a good department. Um, you know, the fire department works really close with you guys, too. It, it's a great community to be working in, and thank you. Your jobs are hard, and I commend you both for doing it, and, you know, obviously, we're always here to support our police officers in anything you need, and, um, I think that's it for me. I don't want to get too long, but people want to go home someday.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to another motion, because we also are getting a step increase because of the experience.
Right. So I'll make a motion, um, to start Officer Bradford at a step two on the wage scale.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so you get that step increase, get my turn. Here we go. Good with that?
We're good.
Okay. Uh, do you guys, anybody else have anything? LT?
Good.
Come on, man. You're always a man of so few words.
I know.
Yeah, you're the man of action.
That's what I was conversing with.
You know, every, every time I see him, I think of, like, SEAL Team and stuff. But it's good to see him smile.
I try.
So congratulations to both of you guys, so we'll see you now in the community.
Thank you, sir.
You had a good team. Thank you. All right. Chief, I know you're hiding back there. Did you have anything to say?
Nope, I just, I'm happy. I mean, it's a bittersweet moment, you know. Obviously, I, you know, me and Joe have known each other for a few years now, and, uh, we've worked well together with, uh, and he's probably the, he's kinda the face of, of the police department when it comes to the schools. You know, we're in the schools all the time, and, and Joe's, Joe's commitment to the schools and the kids has been great. I mean, they're all great. I mean, they're all in the schools, everybody knows them, but, you know, when Joe walks through with Maureen and stuff, it's kinda different and everything, and, you know, I, I think that was where his kinda niche was, was kinda, kinda there and there with the kids. So, uh, you know, I was always with the kids, and just the two of us kinda, it was nice going in the halls and stuff like that, so we'll miss him on the fire department, we'll miss, uh, you know, miss seeing him around, but I'm sure we'll catch up sometime.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to both of you guys, okay? Paul, we're going for a little while, but we look forward to working with you both in team. Congratulations, sir. All right.
Very good.
All right. Let's move on. All right. I lost my place here.
Assistant, uh, number eight.
Number eight. Okay, review the assistant assessor candidate, uh, Deanna Levine. Is that correct?
Yep.
And is she here today?
She's not here tonight, sir. I spoke with Mr. Ferreira about it. Mr. Ferreira will speak on her behalf, and I'll hear on the board's behalf. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the board, thank you very much. Um, as, as we all know, our assistant assessor, Priscilla Claus, had, had resigned and moved on to another position, uh, some time ago, and that created a vacancy for the assistant assessor's position. Uh, the, the board of assessors immediately went to work, advertised the position, interviewed candidates, uh, reviewed candidates, and one emerged, um, Deanna Levine. Uh, and as you will see in your packets tonight, you'll see a copy of her work experience. Um, she has some, uh, work, uh, experience currently, uh, with, uh, the Valley View School in North Brookfield. Uh, she worked as a administrative assessor, uh, for the town of Ware for some time. Uh, she worked in the, uh, actually for the town of Warren as well, um, in our, in, in August of 2020 till April of 2021, uh, in the, in the assessor's clerk position. Um, so she is familiar with the building, uh, with Warren. Um, obviously, she lives in Warren, uh, so she's familiar with the, with the community as well. Uh, she has some experience with, um, the assessor's office, the inner workings of the assessor's office. She has some relationships, uh, built up over time, uh, for her, for her experience with regards to, uh, the DOR and, and Roy Bishop. Um, so she's not, uh, a novice when it comes to, um, the assessor's, uh, office, and, uh, the board of assessors, um, had a, a pretty hard time finding people that are, have some assessor's experience out there. Um, there's a lot of communities that, uh, are looking for, uh, assessors, uh, in, in general. Uh, they have, um, you know, a, a different position called, uh, principal assessors, and that's where a lot of, you know, as you get experienced, people tend to grow towards is that position, uh, of being a principal assess, assessor. It has a lot more little responsibilities, and it's a, it's a more, um, more robo, robust position. Uh, so a, as, as people grow from, from this position to that position, it's tougher to find people to start in, in these positions. So, uh, the board of assessors have selected this individual. They feel that this individual's a good fit. Uh, they feel that this individual is qualified and brings experience to the table. Uh, and as you will see, because of the experience that is being brought to the table, and because of the, um, the, the demand of this particular position, um, they have also requested, then the next item, to start this individual at a step two. Uh, after reviewing the, uh, request, I, I see that this particular request would have no impact on the current fiscal year budget, um, because of the way this position was budgeted for. So there will be no impact on the budget if you decide to grant this, uh, step increase.
Okay. Any questions? No? Any questions?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir. Mr. Ferreira filled you in with everything we asked him to. He met with, uh, Deanna last week, actually the other day, and if we sat down, had a talk, presentation is exactly what we stayed in here tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ready for the motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Deanna, aye, as the assistant assessor.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And for the step?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, to start Deanna at a step two on the wage scale.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Good?
Very good.
Thank you very much. What's that?
Right, but it's a new person.
So, yeah. We're gonna review the request by the board of assessors to move, um, Clerk Donna Corbin from minimum to step one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, on, on this particular motion, um, in this particular request, um, the assessors have, when they, when they originally came to me, um, they argued somewhat of a reorg in the office, and because Donna has been with the town, uh, for some time, um, and she has taken on some more additional responsibilities with the absence of Priscilla, uh, and she has, uh, been fulfilling those obligations, and it's gonna take, you know, at least a couple more weeks. I'm hoping to get Deanna in as quickly as possible, but it's gonna take some time to process, um, her physical and stuff. So with that lag time, Donna has been stepping up, and it's clear that Donna has some experience, and the, the assessors came to me and asked if, if the board would consider moving her from a minimum to a step one. Uh, it's a modest increase, uh, and it would have an impact of roughly about $600, uh, in the salary, uh, roughly, probably less than $600. Um, I feel as though that we would be able to take care of that. Uh, I would be comfortable with recommending that, that we could do that. I, I don't feel as though that, um, that it's not something that we can't do, uh, and I feel as though that this, that Donna has, has definitely stepped up in, in, you know, tried, um, to, to, to pick up the slack when, when she was the only one in the office. Um, so it's not budgeted for, there will be a shortfall, but I feel as though that with our monitoring and our cost savings in, in other areas, we can, we can overcome that very easily.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
This is a perfect example why we have a town administrator, because he is recommending us, he is comfortable with the decision that we should take. Thank you, Jim, for that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. MC?
Excuse me. With that fellow, if she could walk out the door right now, there's three local towns with the same position, $18 an hour, okay? So think about, we have to look at that. She came, she's come here with the experience of two other towns working with the board of assessors, okay? So with the experience she brought in, and the cooperation, the understanding, and the relationship that they, the two had, speaking of Priscilla Claus and her, everything was running, was running perfectly. We are transparent, as, as you know. And with that, Priscilla leaving, Donna has stepped up to keep everything at least level flow with us coming and going. Now with Deanna in there and Donna there, Donna has assured me and the board, or the board and I, excuse me, that she's willing to step up with Deanna. Yesterday, when I left, uh, Jim's office with Deanna downstairs, the two women just took off like, I hate to say it, but two hens in a, in a coop. Boy, they were talking away, and things were going great, okay? The working relationship started right there. They're both comfortable, and I spoke with them about this. So with that little increase, we're gonna have Donna still stay with us, and it's very unfortunate, because the other towns around, guys, you spoke a bit, and I'm sure you've looked into it. We are well below yet. If we can keep our people here doing what you're, you're doing, what Mr. Ferreira is looking at, I spoke with him quite a bit, and he relates back to you folks what's going on. That man sees us in a different view, and it's now gone real professionally done. Question and answers go through he, and you guys decide through him with it. And we thank you both, all three of you and four of you now, for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Good motion.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve Clerk Donna Corbin moving from a minimum step to a step one.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Good?
All set?
All right. All right. So now we're on to the donation agreement with Cornerstone Bank. And... Where do we have that? It's my fake cry tissue. It's two parts. Huh? I know you're gonna tell me it's right where.
Jim, did anything change?
Um, some mon, minor things, um, that, uh, after having counsel just review it a little bit, um, just, it wasn't anything major. Um, there was a, a slight modification, uh, from, uh, the number five, uh, in number six, just the, the language. The bank and, and the town agree, so both, um, to issue a joint press release acceptable to the bank regarding the closure of the branch and the agreement. Um, you know, the, so it's both entities will have to agree. Um, the bank and the town each agree, uh, not to make any disparaging comments or any other, eh, or any other, to the extent allowed by law.
And what exactly?
Allowed by law is what's something that counsel had indicated.
And what exactly does that mean?
Well, I, I mean, you know, if you were to go really, you know, out on a limb and really s, speak disparagingly, you know, against the bank and, and really wanted to, you know, have some type of remarks against that institution, uh, they could theoretically cancel the agreement.
Okay.
So, you know, if there's a, a press conference that, uh, the board's gonna be attending in the future, you know, I would, you know, reserve comments to only, you know, positive or fact, factual-based comments.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is the same agreement we had, and they also are stepping up and giving $5,000 for the Reets Across America, for the Veterans Council, too. Um, and we appreciate that from them. Unfortunately, we couldn't keep them to stay here in the town, 'cause there's financial decisions that were made, um, but they are stepping up to provide some financial, um, assistance to the town, and they're still keeping the ATM in town.
Yep. That's, it's, he's, he, the current, currently, they're negotiating that, um...
So that's in the works still.
The ATM, yeah.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions?
No. I don't think so. No, sir.
You have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Upon signing this, we gotta remember to refrain from anything or engaging in any discussions that, um, the bank could see as negative or, uh, again, disparaging to them. So nothing on social media, nothing, not getting into anything, no separate things. We all are in agreement, if we agree this, not to talk poorly about the bank. So, you guys understand that?
You mean, talking about that great bank who was there?
All right. Um, but it is, we do get 10% of the total sale cost of the building. And $5,000 donated to the veterans.
Yep.
Okay?
So I would imagine at some point, Cornerstone is going to have a draft press release that, I, I don't know if you guys are going to, um, sign onto it or, you know, review it, um, but as soon as they have the draft, I'll forward it, obviously, to everybody, so you can look at it, um, and, uh, I don't know if they're gonna have a press conference or a presentation of a check of some sort. Um, they may do that, you know.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Okay, you ready for a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the agreement with Cornerstone Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right. So we're on warrants and bills.
Yee-haw, look at all this. Woo! All right. I will make a motion to pay the following warrants. FY22, number 111 for payroll, $381.48. FY number tw, uh, FY22, number 112 for vendor, $81,683.27. FY22, number 113, vendor, $32,304.30. FY22, 114, vendor, $7,000.[1726.91] FY twenty-two, one fourteen, vendor, seven thousand dollars. FY twenty-three, oh one, vendor, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars. FY twenty-three, number six, payroll, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and forty-eight cents. FY twenty-three, number seven, vendor, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, sixty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. FY twenty-three, number eight, vendor, why does it say void warrant oh one?
Okay.
Oh.
Number eight. Number oh one was written incorrectly, number oh eight cancels number oh one.
Okay.
All right. Four hundred, credit of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-two. FY twenty-three, number nine, payroll, forty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. FY twenty-three, number ten, vendor, eighteen thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Merrick O'Connell, forty-eight hundred, ninety-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Merrick O'Connell, one hundred and five. Merrick O'Connell, one seventy-five. BG Mechanical Service, five thousand, thirty-two dollars. National Grid, forty-three, forty-four. National Grid, one thirty-one, forty-nine. Verizon, twenty-four, thirty-eight. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. MMA for seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Central Mass Regional Planning for fourteen hundred, ninety-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Joyce, oh, I don't wanna read that.
Refrain from that one.
Easy True Values, seven ninety-nine. Martin Capital Solutions, eleven hundred, seven dollars and twenty-three cents. West Warren Water District, fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. And I'll make a following motion to add to that, to pay Joyce Aihawker fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
I abstain.
I abstain. Cool. All right. Now, we're into the minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes for July seventh and July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Did you make the motion?
I'm just saying.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. So new business, CERT monthly report. Probably use giant font. I like it.
Yeah, I can take my glasses off.
Okay, so CERT, May second, they test of town sirens, activation was normal. May tenth, structure fire, one hundred Maple Street cones and signs were used. And May twenty-third, Westbrookfield Asparagus Festival, they ran public safety booth and helped shuttles and crosswalks and other things. There were ten members assisted through the eight-hour period from eight to four P.M. And then we also had the, well, the temperatures were up in the nineties on May twenty-third and twenty-fourth. That was an early summer heat. On Memorial Day, they helped out on the twenty-ninth for the parade route, blocking roads short time, made detours with police department from twelve to four P.M. Six members assisted on that. And then emergency management report for June, two thousand twenty-two. June fourth, assisted Quabog Regional Middle School, High School graduation ceremony, and they helped park cars, school grounds, four members assisted from eight to twelve. The June fifth, the siren test was normal. June fifteenth was a monthly CERT meeting, marking the looking of new signs and equipment, and they had a new member attend the meeting and talk over past events. He's getting into a lot of things. June seventeenth, visit our MEMA rep from Kevin about grants. June seventeenth, strong thunderstorms, winds. Okay, June twenty-third, attended emergency management training course. And then, June twenty-ninth, candle vigil for the Douglas family held at the football field, and that was from six to eight, and our condolences go out to the Douglas family. And on June thirtieth, Westbrookfield, they had the annual bonfire, CERT assisted in crosswalks in Main Street, and helped with Stirbridge and Charlton's team, had nine members helping from five-thirty P.M. till ten P.M. And then Jim McKeon got his certification for Massachusetts Emergency Management Director Orientation Program, so he attended that course. Good job, Jim. Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
No, sir.
Okay. So old business, do we have any old business?
I was looking, there's something in the minutes that caught my eye. I was just gonna ask, did we get the fire truck for Milbury?
Oh, yes, yep.
Okay.
It was funded service last week, last Wednesday.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
I'll, maybe I'll find something.
Okay. Did you have anything? Old business? No? All right. So we'll move on to town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, Audience Department members. I just have a couple things to report on this week. Last week was a significantly hot week with very humid temperatures, temperatures that reached in the high to mid nineties. And I had asked the Board of Selectmen to give me the authorization to open the cooling center at the senior center. We were able to do that. We quickly reorganized some of the schedules down at the senior center, worked with the director, Sharon Mealy, who was very helpful with trying to get staffing down there and to change her schedule around, to change the, the maintenance person's schedule around, and some of the volunteers from the council on aging around. So that, that got us covered, a couple extra hours, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And with the help of Chief Lavoy, we were able to activate the nine-one-one, reverse nine-one-one system to get the message out to the people. So we were able to do that, and Kyle was very helpful with getting that, that message out. So the chief and Kyle worked together to get that out, that was very helpful, so that got the message out to people along with the My Town Alerts. I also want to comment on the weekend. Because of the humidity went into the weekend, the CERT team stepped up. Jim McKeon contacted me and volunteered his team to open up. So I, again, worked with Sharon to make sure that, you know, there was, you know, that there would be enough people there to, to, you know, to handle the situation and to make sure that the building was secure, both, you know, coming in and going out, and that what that was done. So Sharon stepped up, she made sure the building was locked at the end of the, the shift for the weekend. So, so Jim was able to organize Saturday and Sunday from ten to four. There were some, some individuals that, that took advantage of that. So it was nice to see, I, I popped in on Saturday, we had a, the chief and I had a, and the lieutenant had an interview this past Saturday in the morning, and then afterwards we, I stopped by the senior center. So I did run into a, a, a couple there, and they were taking advantage of it. So it's something that, you know, other communities have done in the area, and I thought it was important to, to notify the board and to ask the board's permission to do it, and I, I think it was successful. It could help us in the future for future grants, you know? I've asked Sharon to keep track of how many people signed in for the usage over there so that, you know, when there's other grants that come out there, I know the president was just here in Massachusetts talking about climate change. Well, there's a reason why he's talking about climate change, and maybe the federal government is going to be offering up some, some money on climate change in the future that maybe will trickle down from, to the states, to the local level. And that could help us with maybe having a, you know, a more expansive cooling center or, or to expand cooling center opportunities or, or shelter opportunities when inclement weather happens in, in small municipalities. So that was kind of some of the reasoning behind that. So it was, it was, it was attended, it was done, and I have to thank everybody's work into that. It was a really good form of cooperation and support and to have it as a resource to, to the residents. So I'm proud to, 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 to report that to the board. The other item that I wanted to talk to you about this evening was today Governor Baker signed the, the, the State House Budget, signed the bill. So fiscal year twenty-three, the, the state has, has adopted a budget, and with that, the Department of Revenue has sent out the cherry sheets, final version, as you'll see in your packets here. I had printed the fiscal year twenty-two in twenty, in the one that was just currently signed, fiscal year twenty-three. You could see the comparison between the two. As you look for the, the cherry sheet for the general government for Warren, you'll see that there's a modest increase of, of a little over a hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. You'll see that, that the town has, is gonna be receiving some Chapter Seventy money that they historically have never received, in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. You will also see an increase in, in veterans' benefits, a small increase in unrestricted general aid, general government aid, a small increase in VSB elderly, and a small increase in, in owner land, state-owned land. So those are, along with a slight increase in public libraries. That, that incorporates our little over a hundred thousand dollars worth of, of new cherry sheet money that the, that the town has received. You'll see, for the assessments on the second page, you'll see the, the assessments that the, that the town has been assessed. Kind of, it's not, it won't offset the, the total amount that we receive, but you'll see that there, there, there are some assessments. The assessment has gone down from fiscal year twenty-two to, to twenty-three, which is, which is helpful. And you'll also see in your packets the aid, the Chapter Seventy money that Quabog gets. So I also have in here fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three, basing it upon how Quabog has budgeted for this fiscal year. I would say that they're pretty safe with their, with their budgetary numbers for what they had budgeted from the state, after reviewing their budget and, and what is the actuals. You, you can see that there's a, a small increase in, in, in Chapter Seventy money to Quabog as well.
Very good. Actually, almost double what they given to the veterans.
Yeah.
For the veterans' benefits, which is awesome. Because they actually went from, was it thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars to seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars? It's good to see. Cool? Is that a question?
No, I don't think so.
That's it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. It's funny, you know? I don't know how accountants and people do, just stare at numbers all day, go insane. It's good. They're different. I want them to be polite. All right, very good. Is that it for your report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yep.
Thank you.
With the cooling center, was there a sign-in sheet every day that it was?
Yes.
Implemented?
Yeah.
And you got people, so their name and like their phone number and stuff like that?
Yeah, whatever information that they wanted to volunteer, just for, for tracking purposes in terms of to see the utilization of, of the, of this, of the cooling center, those are the numbers that, that, that will lead for any possible future grants that, that come out, that the town.
Probably gonna have to look at that again this week because it looks like we're getting in above nineties again.
Yeah.
Coming up. So we might wanna implement it again. Everybody did a great job and spearheaded it, thank you very much. You know, I think it's something we could definitely do more often if we can. Looks like, again, this, this week, we might be using it again if it warrants it.
And if you have that list of people who were there, you know, and they gave a phone number, then maybe Sharon could call out to some of those people and say, hey, we're doing it again if you need it. Because presumably, they don't have A.C. if they were at that cooling center, so.
I have to say, having the reverse nine-one-one and everything going out.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, there was like messages all week long.
And I have to say, your, your messages were very good.
Yeah.
Very articulate, very professional, and you got the message across.
Yep.
We could have Jim do a whole answering machine service.
There was many takes, as the chief witnessed.
I'm like, wow, I wonder if he hit that the first time?
No, 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 many takes.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Well, thank you very much. And now we're on to comments and concerns. Anybody have any comments and concerns?
I'll just say that supposedly now on Zoom, we have captioning. I don't know if there's any way to verify that.
Do you want me to put in?
Yeah.
I can put in.
Yeah. Log in and see if you can get it.
Maybe two minutes.
Yeah.
Cool.
So it is enabled for what it's worth, so.
You have any other comments?
No, that's it.
Do you have any comments and concerns while you're doing that?
No, sir.
Anybody out there?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering, so we just, you guys just finished the wage scales, and already the assessor's wage scale is apparently inadequate. Are we gonna have to look at the whole wage scale again?
I don't think so at this point.
I mean, but we.
We're not there. Can you kill my voice on that?
No. But we gave the flexibility to move around in that step system, so.
Based on?
Experience, effort.
Well, that, that's.
That's fine when you take that into concern, but if.
Well, that's when the department head. The department, the department head basically presents Jim with why somebody should be at a higher step. Jim evaluates it, looks at it, presents it to us and says, hey, based on this person's experience, he would recommend and not recommend. Is it captioned?
I have to ask for it.
Okay.
Is it captioned now?
It is.
Okay, so we get captioned now. That's actually a requirement that's coming down potentially, that we have to have captioned.
So the, the users have to request it?
There's a two option thing, one is request, S.D., or is it anonymous? I don't know.
So you're probably not gonna see it pop up there because we'd have to request it.
It is, it's.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, right here. Yeah, like a point on my screen.
Now, I could hear my own voice, which I hate.
I'm gonna hang up here.
I can see it now, too. So, yes, we're working.
It's like, I'm not working for that, or whatever the case is. I mean, it sounds like a desperation rather than a qualification increase.
What do you mean?
Well, she had worked here in the assessor's office for less than a year, and in where in the assessor's office for less than a year, right? So step two was like six years' experience. So step two was like six years' experience, isn't it? So I'm just, so it seems to me, if you can't hire somebody for the wage scale, that's all well and good, but we're just going to have to maybe look at it again because if we're, again, jumping steps out of desperation to hire people, it's not fair to the other people who are going by the step system in the building currently, you know? It's just, it's just not equitable to everyone.
Right.
That's all, that's my concern. I'm just.
It's a case-by-case basis.
I understand.
And as far as that, and it's up to the department head to provide supporting document on why that person should be at a higher step. And we'll take that into consideration. It doesn't mean it's going to happen because we still got to vote on it and accept it. But again, the pay scales, we know they were all messed up, and we did our best to try to fix them and get them competitive. And thank you very much for the, all the residents that voted to approve it because it was definitely needed. We, in a lot of departments, we would be hurting. I know the police department, they were making four, five dollars less than everybody else around us. So it had to have happened.
It needed to be done.
It had to.
I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just saying now we have a new one in place, but we need to relook at some of the classifications if they're just not realistic to hire somebody.
Karen, I think part of the problem, too, is some of the departments did not do their due diligence in what they needed to do. So it was kind of a guessing game on those particular departments.
So did you have something to add?
Yeah, so I would also say that, you know, one of the charges that the Board of Select and want me to do at some point is to do some employee evaluations. And we have to develop a system to do that. And it has to be a fair system across the board. So as we do that, you know, to the point of, you know, well, you know, there may be some inequities in the beginning, but some of those inequities may turn around as people get evaluated, as they get good evaluations, there may be an opportunity there for somebody in the future that may not be just ready to get that step, that may have an opportunity approach, you know, sooner than that step based on evaluations.
Right. And again, you know, we don't currently have any real evaluation system that's standardized throughout the town. And that's one of the things when we were talking is we really need to be able to evaluate our employees and see the ones that are really doing good and reward that. And the ones that aren't doing so well, maybe we can do something, some sort of intervention like training or education to get them up to par to where they need to be. And if they're really just not getting with it or they just refuse to, maybe we need to move on from that employee. But we need to have some sort of evaluation means to identify those employees and see who's doing good.
I would just have to, so for instance, I don't need to interrupt, I'm sorry, but I don't know how anybody's going to evaluate somebody who works in the town's clerk's office if they don't work with the town clerk, right? By the way, if you don't work in the office, if you're not doing the day-to-day with the person, you're just going to have to rely on the department head's evaluations. So maybe you could just get that, like I get evaluated, I evaluate on every year, maybe just pull in the department head evaluations and base things on that. So it would be hard for you to tell how good a job one is doing because you're not sitting next to one in the office.
So as we develop a plan to do evaluations, I would envision this plan working with either the chairperson of the board or a department head, depending on how the structure of that department is structured, and work with that person so that the approach of evaluations are uniformed for everybody in the building, because that's a critical piece to that. And to make sure that the evaluations, so that I could hear from either the department head or the chairperson of the board or their designee, what the status is and how this person is progressing in their department, and I can report that back to the board. So I think it's not just me arbitrarily reviewing somebody and giving, and getting information from them because you're 100% correct. I don't work with that person all the time. So I think it's critically important to listen to the department head or the chairperson of the board or their designee and have a sit-down, just like we did with the interviews, you know, for the police officers. I worked with the chief and the lieutenant on that, and we worked together through that. And I think that's the way in which I would see that, once the system is established, that's how we're going to, I think we're going to model that around.
And it's in the works, but we need to do something that's fair to everybody. And there are ways of doing that. I have an evaluation system.
Wage scales having to be checked.
So I have an evaluation system that I go through at work all the time. And I have an initial evaluation, which is basically gives me guidance and says, this is what your job is. And, you know, if you complete these things, you can be rated at a higher level. If you don't do this, then you're lower. At halfway through the year, I get a midpoint evaluation. That midpoint says basically how I'm doing. It typically has things that I'm doing good and some things that I need to work on. Because we all need to work on things. Nobody's perfect in this world. So it helps give that employee guidance for them to grow. Maybe they need to get some training. Maybe they need to learn PowerPoint a little better or whatever, you know? And it helps give them guidance. And then at the end of the year, when you're sitting there looking at it and you say, okay, overall, the employee has done all this, they've improved, they've done great, they're very cohesive, they work well for us, or, you know something? They can't even type their name right, you know, on the opposite spectrum. And we can look at that and identify, hey, this is a person we want to reward, and we got to look at how we can do that to make them want to stay here. Because everybody that works hard wants to be recognized for their work. And that's what we're trying to do, is give a standardized system throughout the town where we can recognize our employees for doing a good job and help the ones that need help. And that's where we're going with so far. And some of that might be, okay, you did really well, you did great throughout the whole year, you know something? The department head is recommending a step. So now you have that supporting document and you have that, okay, we did a midpoint evaluation, they did this, they corrected any deficiencies, and they're doing really great, they've improved so much, and they're working at a higher level, okay? And we can evaluate, okay, maybe we want to do a step or potentially do something else that can reward that employee for that. So that's what we're trying to do with that. And one of the things that we've give department heads is if you have an employee that deserves that step, at least present it to us, present it to Jim, so we can at least look at it and go from there. Because it really is unfair to bring in some employees with experience, say, the police department. You know, you have a police officer who has academies, SWAT training, all kinds of training, advanced.
Like the guy that was hired last night. With a huge experience and stack certifications.
Yeah, he had, he had a lot of stuff in there. They presented the evidence. Both of them didn't get it because, and even though one of them has worked here for a while, the one that's coming on had all that. He's coming from a lot of experience. And that you have to do sometimes because if you don't do that, people don't want to start from the bottom every time. You know, you're coming in, he may have had 10 years' experience, law enforcement, SWAT, dive team, all that stuff. And the guy that's getting hired the same day, you know, no academy, no nothing, and just, it's comparing the difference. So it's bringing them up.
That guy has step-two credentials. I mean, that guy had.
It's bringing that person up.
He had certifications. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about that.
So that's what we're looking at, and it's a case-by-case thing.
I'm just saying, if we're still, if we're still like we were with the sewer department, hiring above step out of desperation, then maybe we need to look at the pay scale.
I think the sewer department's squared away now.
Well, I'm, all right, I'm talking about last year.
Yeah.
We had to, we had to jump because the pay scale was inadequate.
Right.
Perhaps our assessor's pay scale is still inadequate. That's all I'm saying.
So the thing is, before, it was a very rigid scale, right? You came in at the minimum, and you could only work your way through it by years of work, right? So that still exists, but I think we freed it up, so now you can move around in there more. So it's more, it still may, it'll still work because you can put people where you need to put them. And if they deserve a higher step, then you can do that. So the rigidity is gone.
Hiring somebody for the position, then you give them a higher step.
Right.
That's the impression that I'm getting, we're hiring still people at higher steps, not because of experience or certifications, but because we can't find anybody to take the job.
But we could.
So if that's the case, we need to look at the pay scale. That's all, that's all I was asking.
But we could rejigger it all over again, and inflation keeps accelerating at 9%. And that whole pay scale would be out of date in another year, so we could keep chasing it.
Well, I'm not even talking about all the pay scale. I'm just talking about certain targeted places, right?
So I think, I think if the assessor's pay scale is still below the industry standard, then we could probably look at that and say, okay, what would be competitive?
Sure.
And it would have to go in front of town to be voted on. Again, we had a lot of different jobs and a lot of varying positions, and we worked a lot on this, and Karen worked tons on it, too. And, you know, we put a lot into this to try to be as fair as possible and get it up there. And there was all kinds of debates on, well, do we want to go that much at once? Maybe we should break it up into portions because the town's not going to vote for it. But by the time you break it up into portions, you're already behind again. You're always playing catch-up, so we had to do that. You know, one, like, jump into it, get it to par, rip that Band-Aid off, get it to where people need to be, and then we could do a maintenance, kind of clean up here and there to make sure people are staying competitive.
I think the other problem, too, is that the people that were lumped into the categories. You know, you look at a secretary and you look at an assessor, and if they're in the same category, I don't know if they are or not because of the thing in front of me, then that's silly to pay somebody that's just sitting there answering the phones versus somebody that's.
Okay, so I think, I think assistant assessor might have its own pay scale. They have their own charge. Or there's not that many.
On the council on aging director, same pay scale.
The council on aging directors on the same pay scale is, oh, the assistant assessor? Yes, yeah.
So, I don't know, I would think we're open to, if a department head comes in with a proposal and says, look, these pay scales still aren't working very well, I propose this, and works with Jim, and then Jim can present it to us, I don't see why we wouldn't consider it, right? If I can speak for you two.
Yeah.
And myself, I mean, yeah, why not? I think we've.
I was kind of thinking about the other people who work in step system in the building who, it's, it's, like, if you're finding a raise for a product, I'm for a raise.
Again, that's evaluations and stuff that's going to help with that, too, and help people grow. You know, we're here to help everybody, you know? We're trying to make it work, and we're not going to make everybody happy 100% of the time, but we're trying to make the employees happy while keeping the fiscally responsible with the town. Because again, we all answer to taxpayers, too. So we're trying to do what we can to, you know, basically make it all work in the end.
So we're not trying to be pushovers, but I do think this is a board of yes, and we'll say no if it really needs to be no. But I think we're always ready to say yes with a good case, right? I mean, we're, yeah, we are willing and ready to work with you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did you have something to add?
I'm not really just going to say I agree with Rich. You know, it's, we are not here to screw up or look for our interests. We're trying to here to make it work. You know, it's a win-win situation, and we just want the best for Warren.
Sorry, by coming across, trying to be a monkey wrench in the work, that's not the case at all.
No, it's fine, it's completely fine.
I'm just asking, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, you know, where.
That's what comments and concerns are about.
Yeah. We don't know this unless you bring it up.
Absolutely.
Valid question.
Yeah.
And again, if you have further concerns, you could always talk with Jim, pull him aside, you know? He always knows where to get ahold of us.
I'm calling you, David.
To me, too. I'm always available. I'm here. Okay. So anybody else have any more comments and concerns? Zoom world?
I'll just say, when Derek said win-win situation, it said a wiggling situation.
Did it say wiggling? You're having wiggling situations?
I don't know. It's working, but. For better or for worse, we have captions.
All right, so no more comments and concerns, nothing in Facebook or Zoom?
I don't think so.
All right. So Comcast, our correspondents, Comcast is making some changes, huh?
Again.
Again, huh? Jeez.
Yeah, I don't think you have to read all this, right?
No. I, well, I couldn't, just to note, you're saying it's going to be on the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
They're getting rid of all the Russian stuff.
Yeah, they're getting rid, getting rid of Russian channels.
Is that support for Ukraine?
Subscription, subscription, subscription only. So Olympic channel, was it ceasing operations as of September 30th? And Epix HD is no longer available on channel 85 and 1790, but will continue to be available on channels 322 and 1871. And customers are being notified by Comcast. So you'll get something in the mail letting you know that your channels are changing slightly if you watch those. Next meeting. Do we have anything pressing next week?
Nothing. We have an executive session for Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday at 6:00.
As far as the select board, no.
We have nothing out there?
Nothing out there pushing.
Probably take a week off. I know.
Well, that's a week.
Unless you really want to be here.
Don't say that we're going to take a meeting off because we're always reading emails and always doing stuff. It's not a week off.
But we're not taking, yeah, we won't meet on Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah, you're meeting on Wednesday instead.
If you're saying we're going to take a week off.
Yeah, we have the meeting on Wednesday for executive session anyways.
So our next meeting for the select board in here will be the 11th?
August 11th.
August 11th. Okay, that is scheduled for me, boom.
That's really nice because my daughter's birthday isn't even going to celebrate on the 4th.
That works out nicely.
Yeah. It could have been late.
Really late, like after she's gone to bed.
That's Derek and his wife celebrating, that's good.
All right. 6 o'clock save on that one, so that's all scheduled.
On the 3rd, we have an executive.
Executive. Good?
I'm good, sir.
So our next meeting is going to be on August 11th at 6:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich I hacker, aye.
Derek V, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned.